Hello, everybody. I'm Nicholas Snow and this is the Nicholas Snow Show, imagine that. And this is Promo Homo TV and I'm very excited on this episode to welcome my longtime friend and someone I respect a great deal, Ron DeHart, who is a candidate for Palm Springs City Council District 3. I'm endorsing Ron and I also have very fond feelings for his opposition in this race, Joy Meredith Brown. She has been invited to be on the show. She has an open invitation. But I am endorsing Ron and I want you to know more about him if you don't already. This might seem like a campaign commercial. It isn't. I'm not being paid for this and I'll give you a little bit more information about that after we watch this.
After serving our community for 11 years, I'm excited to announce I'm running for the Palm Springs City Council District 3 seat. I've declared my formal intention to serve the residents of Palm Springs. I care about our hometown's vitality and livability. As a small business owner, gay Hispanic, father of two, I want to keep our city a great place to live, work, and visit. I'm running because I'm a resident who cares about Palm Springs and believes we can have safe streets, sound economic development, a robust tourism economy, and accessible housing while being a leader in sustainability. I'm committed to working hard, amplifying your voice, and being an effective council member for you. I'm reaching out today to my friends, neighbors, and community leaders to ask for your endorsement, financial support, and volunteer support. I'm Ron DeHart for Palm Springs City Council and I am all about inclusion, opportunity, and progress.
So that is a little bit about Ron as he told all of us in his announcement of his campaign last year. And I have had the opportunity to be with him at the press conference that he had in Ruth Hardy Park, announcing that he was running, and at a wonderful kickoff event that he had in downtown Palm Springs with initial supporters. And it was really easy to endorse Ron at that time because he was running unimposed, but my excitement for him remains. Now, I mentioned in full disclosure that I'm not being paid for this show, but you know, one of the ways that I get support for Promo Homo TV is I have patrons that subscribe to Promo Homo TV for as little as $10 a month now, but when I started, it was $3 a month. So in October of 2022, Ron was very gracious and he started subscribing to Promo Homo TV for $3 a month. He increased his pledge. He now gives me $8.30 a month and he's given me $103 since October 1st, 2022. I just want to disclose that. I have about 34 people who support my network. So, full disclosure. And with that, I want to remind us all why we're voting and then we're going to have a really nice conversation with Ron DeHart. So, we got a vote. I built that PSA. I did it with licensed content. But yeah, we have a lot at stake as a nation in our election. Without further delay, let me welcome to the show my friend Ron DeHart. Hi, Ron.
Hey, how are you?
I'm great. How are you?
I am rocking and rolling.
Now, the other thing I want to disclose is you and I are both involved with a major nonprofit organization. We're not going to talk about that in this interview because it's a non-political organization. But I don't have a financial relationship with that organization either. I participate as a philanthropist. So with that, a full disclosure out, one of the things I would love to know, since there are two candidates in the race, as you have been out and about in shared spaces with your competitor, in what ways do you feel that you are different and that you bring different qualities to the council? What differentiates you? One of the luxuries we have in our community is that many of us support the same important causes, which makes it more challenging than to make an informed decision about who to put into elected office.
Yeah, I think, and you know, thank you for inviting me to be on the show tonight. I think it's important for us to continue having the conversations with as many people as we possibly can in the community prior to the election. And if this helps us reach folks and lets folks know a little bit more about who I am and what I will bring to City Council, it's fantastic. So you know, really, I think the real difference in what Ron DeHart as a candidate brings to City Council in Palm Springs is, you know, my unique perspectives, my history, my background, running multimillion dollar businesses, and my extensive government planning experience, as well as the fact that I'm known in the community as being a proven credible leader throughout the community. And I think that's really one of the key traits that stands out and that's different. And that's what I bring to the City Council is proven leadership, credible leadership, you know, to the work that we're gonna do.
Well, I would concur that those are all qualities you possess. I mean, a particular event that we're involved with is just a massive event logistically and you make it all happen. And it's just incredible to see how that works. And there's so much leadership involved in something like that, so many coalitions that need to be built. I mean, that's just one example. And then, of course, one of the things that I really admire you for is your participation on various city committees, including the Human Rights Commission. Tell me about what has meant to you to serve on the Human Rights Commission and why you think that that commission is so important? And what makes kind of Palm Springs unique around LGBTQ issues?
The service on the Human Rights Commission is something that I'm really proud of. I was appointed twice by the City Council to serve and subsequently elected five times as Chair of the Commission. I think what we've been able to do to shine the light on our entire community and the diversity of our entire community is something that I'm very proud of. And listening to those in the marginalized individuals in our community that brought forward their concerns and issues and really helping to elevate and increase the level of awareness for our marginalized communities has been the most important thing that I think we can do with the Human Rights Commission. And the work that we've done primarily, most recently, listening to folks that live up in desert highlands and their families and that have been in Palm Springs for 70 years and more. I think that's been an important role for the Human Rights Commission to serve the city. But we've also been involved in the cannabis movement in town, Protection Bill of Rights for seniors that are in Palm Springs, and the rights of homelessness, the homeless rights for individuals. We started on the Human Rights Commission many years ago, you know, looking into the homelessness issue in the city. And then subsequently, that led to the cities forming the coalition at that time to look at homelessness in Palm Springs. I think when you look at the diversity of our community and the fact that we're very unique in having, you know, almost half of our city LGBTQ, and that community intersects our marginalized communities, it intersects all cultures. And that we thread through every, everything that happens within the city for all groups. So the LGBTQ, we're not separate and apart from the African-American community or the Latino community or Asian or Filipino, our veterans, our doctors, our nurses. You know, we are the community. And when we look at a population that's as large as the LGBTQ community in Palm Springs is, you know, we have particular interest in making sure that there is diversity on programs throughout the city, that hate crimes are addressed, that we raise awareness for issues of hate within the community when that comes up. And again, not just for the LGBTQ community, but for the Asian community when there was an increase of violence aimed toward Asians in general. You know, those are just a couple of examples, but it's, we're in a unique position. Palm Springs is a very welcoming city for the LGBTQ community and we're in an incredible position to be able to tell that story to people around the world and let them know that they're welcome. You're welcome in Palm Springs. And you don't always get that welcome in other cities in the United States and around the world. So it's been, it's been an honor to continue to serve on the commission. And my term will come to an end hopefully on November 8th or December 10th when the swearing in happens at City Council if I'm fortunate enough to win the election on Tuesday, November 8th.
Thank you for that. So Palm Springs now has districts and we elect our council people to represent districts. And I was wondering if you feel that there are any unique qualities or characteristics within District 3 that are just that, unique to District 3 versus issues that we might be taking on as a city?
Well, what we see in one district, we generally see in all five districts. But uniqueness for District 3 is the downtown corridor, uptown. You know, that's where everybody wants to be. That's where, you know, we have many restaurants that our locals visit year round and it's the place that our tourists that come into town want to be. So that's very unique. We're in a very unique position in District 3 to have such a unique and wonderful and varied small business community that really is the backbone of our economy. You know, our small business community and small business owners create that sense of community. And that is, that's very unique for District 5 compared to our other districts. And then each neighborhood has its own qualities and, you know, from the movie Colony to Old Las Palmas and Vista Las Palmas to over in Sunrise, you know, and just up toward Vista Chino. You know, everywhere, you know, every part of our town, our city feels a little different in its own way.
Well, that's true. Something else I was curious to know about you is, are there any decisions of the council in recent years that you disagreed with?
That question has been asked and I laugh because it's how far, how many years do you want to go back?
Let's go, let's go back. Let's just stick with the existing city council.
Yeah, you know, and we're never going to agree with what everybody is doing. And when I, when I look at, you know, councils that have come before, you know, everybody has been committed and they want to do a good job. Do I agree with everything that happens with City Council that in my time that I've been here? No, but you know what? We have to accept the outcomes and move forward and work to change the things that we don't agree with. And you know, that's, I've been involved in the city and going to city council meetings back in the day with George Zander in 2011 and, you know, we really had a commitment to being involved and engaged in the community and witnessing City Council is frequently witnessing their work. Yes, there may be decisions. I can't remember what the decision may be, but I've never, I haven't always agreed with what, with what council is done. But the important thing is that when a decision is made collectively, we do come together as a community and support those decisions and do what we can to make the best out of them and focus on the future, focus on tomorrow. We can't cry over spilled milk and we really need to focus on the things we can change and control for tomorrow.
Well, fantastic on that. And I want to get into your future plans in a moment, but I also just wanted to explain how I make a decision when I want to endorse somebody. And you know, one of the, one of the things that I do is I pay attention to the individuals and the organizations that I believe in, that are filled with people who I support, that I've been working with in many ways for many years, you know. And just glancing at this, you know, Planned Parenthood, the Victory Fund, Equality California, Desert Stonewall Democrats, the Palm Springs Firefighters Association, Inland Empire Labor Council, the Public Employees Association of Palm Springs, and on and on and on. There's, you know, many, many others there. And I fill out my ballot the same way. Yes, I do what I can to study my own. But frankly, all right, what is the California Democratic Party doing about a particular issue? What, you know, so there's lots of sources that I go to to make my decisions and all of the organizations I trust are coming out for you and including Democrats of the Desert, which is one that I didn't mention. So how do you feel to get these endorsements? And did they come easily? Did you have to fight for them?
You know, you certainly have to earn the endorsement from many of these trusted organizations. And it's something that doesn't happen overnight. You know, Planned Parenthood, you know, Planned Parenthood, you know, you look at my history and my involvement with women's rights that goes back two decades in my activism. You know, there's, there's a history that goes along with every single one of these endorsements. And to some people, endorsements don't carry a lot of weight, especially those that don't get them. But when you look at the collective body and the organizations and the working families that they represent and the hundreds of thousands of families throughout Riverside County, and they're looking at one candidate saying that this candidate possesses the leadership qualities that we want to see in a city council member. You know, it gives a lot of power to what those logos mean on the page. And to have several dozen organizations now, you know, coming up and endorsing my candidacy is, I'm honored to have earned those endorsements and, you know...
Oh, so Ron lost the connection. I'm sure he's going to come back to us. And in the meantime, one of the things also, and here he is, and you're back. I stalled for you for a moment. So yes, you had to earn those endorsements. You're there.
I'm not sure if it's my spectrum or what's happening here, but that's the second...
Well, you're back.
That's bounced off and I'm back, yes. So endorsements are powerful and when you look at the group that's standing up in support, the Police Officers Association, the Firefighters Association, these are very trusted organizations within the city of Palm Springs throughout Riverside County. And it is meaningful. It's meaningful to tell the folks that are looking at that webpage that you saw that says, hey, there's something here with this candidate that these trusted organizations are supporting. And I'm grateful, you know, for every single one that comes in. And we're not done. We're, they're still coming in. And I was honored to receive the endorsement of the California Senate Pro-Ton Tony Atkins this morning. So that was, you know, very appreciated to be acknowledged by Tony Atkins and to have her looking at my campaign and saying, oh my gosh, we need Ron in Palm Springs.
Well, one of the things I wanted to say regarding endorsements is I don't think I'm all that. I'm just, I'm some guy with an online web stream, but I do reach people. And sort of, you know, other people might throw a house party for someone. Well, I throw a House TV episode for people. And Will Rollins was on my show and, you know, he's been at house parties all the time, but he was in mine and I reached hundreds of people for him. And it's, and you know, when you, when you care about more than one person in a race, it's kind of weird to decide to choose one of them. But I've spent my life expressing, you know, what's important to me. So I don't, I don't want to stop expressing what's important to me when someone's feelings might get hurt or so I try to be professional and communicate with dignity.
Yeah.
So tell me, what is on your to-do list? What do you want to, what do you want to address immediately and how? And have you had any tentative conversations with people you know will still be serving on the council when you're there?
Yeah, there's a chance there may only be one person continuing to serve. So our council, no matter what the turnout is, it's going to be very different than it is today. You know, very, very, the perspectives that people are going to have and the qualities that they're going to bring to the table is going to be very, very different than what we've seen today. You know, I have not come out and promised two dozen tasks or goals that we're going to accomplish. I'm not throwing these promises out. I'm not saying I'll learn this on the job or I will seek to find solutions. I will, you know, learn about an issue. What I am saying is I'm committed to focus on the most important issues that our community is facing right now, and that's homelessness. It's the petty theft, the crime that is increasing, and accessible housing. I like to look at it as affordable housing, but accessible housing, you know, when a house costs a million three, that's not accessible for our working force in Palm Springs. So we have to look at how can we be, how can we do things different than what we've done for the last 70 years? And be as creative as we possibly can, think out of the box. Look at the city's lending power. Look at the city's ability to buy land, work with developers and build. You know, look, look at the options that are available through partnerships with other social service organizations to approach the process a little different, including co-ops, including working with Habitat for Humanity. But we know we have to focus on making housing available for folks in our community, especially the working class. And that's where my primary focus is going to be. I'm committed to work and fight for housing for our working class. And I know our business community will stand behind that. We want to improve the quality of life for our workers in Palm Springs so they're not driving 45 minutes in and 45 minutes out. I want to see them work in the city that they love, be a participant in the city, and raise their families in Palm Springs instead of having to work here and then drive home and not be a part of the city. So accessible housing for our workforce is a primary goal for myself as we, hopefully after November 8th. And then, you know, when you look at housing, that also is touching on the challenges that we face with the homelessness community, the homelessness issue. So focusing on homeless, the issue of homelessness and bringing our community together. Right now, there may be 30 different organizations working on homeless issues at some level, whether it's mental health, whether eating food, spiritual, medical. No matter what it is, we have many people, many organizations that are working on it. And we have to tackle this challenge with, in a unified effort. We can't have 30 solutions in our tiny area. We can't have 30 solutions for an issue. We've got to bring these groups together. We got to bring these people together. And not everybody talks to each other, but we have to find a way where we can sit around the table, bring all of our organizations together, bring the churches together, bring the entities that feed the homeless out on the street on a daily basis, bring them together. When we sit around the table, we will come up with solutions that will work. And when we're unified in our efforts, we're not splitting our efforts three dozen different ways. The community will see solutions, but more importantly, we will help the homeless folks in our community. We will get people into housing. We will get them access to the mental health care that if somebody is expressing a mental health crisis. And the more often that we can be touching these folks in the community, the more often they see our organizations and the work that we bring to the table, the more comfortable they're going to have, they're going to have a greater level of comfort asking for help or seeking help. It doesn't matter if it's the drug addicted individual, he may or she may need to get touched 100 times. But when the time comes and they're ready, they're ready to make a decision to improve themselves, then we have to let them see our community is there and they can trust the people that are going to help them get that help. We can get there. I will provide the leadership to help bring our community together and work toward solutions for, you know, this issue that is just out of control. So that's a big project and that's the primary reason why I'm not promising 20, 20 different projects. I want to focus on just the core, core issues, crime, homelessness, and accessible housing. And if we can make progress on any one of those three and four years, I personally will feel satisfied that I've made a difference. And I know we will have been able to have an impact on residents, on those that are homeless, and for our workforce.
Well, you know, well, you do know, right now, I'm sitting in an affordable housing apartment in a complex where I've lived for 10 years that has saved my life. And my housing challenges were not related to drug and alcohol issues, but I have 21 years sober as well. So I have a frame of reference in terms of some of the issues that you're talking about. Can I have you for five more minutes?
Sure.
All right. Thank you so much. Speaking of family, tell me about yours. And is it sort of an incidental thing to be gay running for something in Palm Springs now? Does it even matter?
Well, you know, some people migrate to that three-letter word instantly. And others, a majority of people have that I've talked to, they look at... they look at the leadership, they look at the credibility, they look at my history. Not that I've just been in Palm Springs volunteering since two thousand and five, but I've brought action. I've gotten behind issues that I felt were important. I'm not the bystander that just talks about something that has to, you know, this needs to be done or that needs to be done. You know, I've been involved, I've gotten involved in city committees and stood behind the work and roll up my sleeves. So people see that level of involvement. And that is more meaningful than the fact that, oh, to heart, you know, you know, he's gay. You know, so it's, it is a secondary. But to some people, it, it seems to be a primary focus. And I don't think it should be. I think my skills, my leadership and, and my commitment to the community is what really should matter.
Well, I, I didn't even mention it until what, thirty-one minutes into our interview. And you've been out there campaigning and my thought, my, and of course, there was a time when maybe that would have been a primary reason to really fight for someone to win an office because representation matters, matters. But I feel like we live in a city, you might think I, I may wrong, but I feel like we're living in a city where people can look at everything we are and this one aspect of who we might be is incidental.
Yeah. And, and, and the level of comfort and the ability to live who we are in the city makes a huge difference in the quality of life for the LGBTQ community. You know, I was at another function the other night and maybe there was thirty-five people. And I couldn't have asked this question maybe five years ago, ten years ago and gotten the response that I got. But I asked when I first started, I said, how many people in this room are LGBTQ? And then almost, almost the whole room's hands went up into the air. And, and it was this, this sense of, you know, the, the power of knowing who we are and, and being proud of who we are and in public to say, I am LGBTQ. You know, that was, that was powerful. You know, that, that our community and a broad sense, the community was very, is, is very comfortable and they know, you know, they know who they are and they proudly live their authentic life. So that's, that's an exciting part about what Palm Springs means. And, you know, to me is that there's so many people that are living that authenticity that they, they didn't get to do in other communities. You know, maybe through their work career or growing up. But here they are in Palm Springs and it's such a significant presence in our community. The, the number, the percentage of LGBTQ in our community is so significant. There's not enough city council seats to accommodate the diversity that we can bring to this table. And I think, you know, we, we need to have visibility. We need to have a presence. And we need to be involved in the decisions that are made every single day in this community. And if the LGBTQ community is not there making those decisions, if we're not sitting at the table and we represent fifty percent of this community, something's wrong. We have to be there. And I, I've pledged that I will, I am working hard to make sure I will, I will be one of those people at that table.
Well, thank you for being on my show tonight, Ron. I appreciate who you are in the world and I support your candidacy. I'd love to give you the option, the opportunity to add to our conversation anything that you feel you want to before we conclude.
You asked me about my family and we didn't even get to talk about it. So, you know, I, I, I think, you know, many people, many people don't, don't realize that I'm a Mexican. And when they look at me, they don't, they don't see a Mexican. They see a gray-haired, white man. And, you know, I'm very proud of my heritage. And we were, my family were pioneering Mexicans in the state of Arizona well before statehood, going back to eighteen sixty-three. We've run the ranches, we've, we've, you know, herded the cattle, we've toed the fields. We fed the communities. We've, we've become teachers and we've served the military. And very proud of that Latino heritage. And the fact that I've got a family, I've got two boys that are first year in college and the last year in high school. And that I get to call Palm Springs home is, I, I love Palm Springs. I want to be a part of making sure that the vitality that we know about Palm Springs remains true and that I can be a figure of hope for folks in the community that we aren't going to focus and dwell on yesterday, that we're going to look forward and look at the things that we've got to face and the challenges that are in front of us tomorrow and be there to solve those, those challenges. And I would be honored for the support from everybody who's watching to get your vote and to help me get that seat on city council so I can make sure that our presence is known.
Well, thank you, Ron. You have my vote. Well, you don't have my vote because I don't live in your district.
You don't live in District Three.
Yeah, you, you, you have my, my, you know, my, my good vibes and my endorsement, but you don't have my vote because I don't live in your district. But I'm, I'm honored to know you and appreciate you being on the show.
Yeah, it's, it's my honor and thank you. Again, I appreciate the invitation and, and, and that the fact that you're giving us this platform is valuable and thank you.
Thank you. If you'll hang tight, I'll just talk to you briefly in a moment. For everyone else, thank you for watching.